We call to order the Menner City Council regular meeting of Wednesday, November 6, 2019. The invocation will be given by Councilman Marn.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Julie, call to roll.
Mr. Marn?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Landik?
Here.
We have the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of October 15, 2019.
Move to approve.
Second. Julie, call to roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Public hearings, we have ordinance number 19-0-083.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Menner 2006 as amended and the official zoning map by rezoning of approximately 6.02 acres of land from B1 Community Service District to B2 General Business District at 8346 Bellflower Road.
This public hearing is being held pursuant to notice duly published and posted according to law. Julie's clerk has read the title, and I now ask the city manager to please describe the project rezoning amendment or constitutional use.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Mitchell, please.
Thank you. Tonight, we are considering the proposed rezoning for a hotel on the subject property. At the October 3 Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission recommended that the approval of the rezoning be denied by a vote of 0.7.
If the applicant is present, are there any comments from the applicant he'd like to make at this time? Oh, okay. All right, there are any comments from the public? Anyone wishing --
Hold on. Jeff.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Please identify yourself, name and address.
I'm Ashish Patel, representing Bussaras Lodging Incorporated, living at Fremont, We had submitted the rezoning request for a hotel on the Bellflower property we purchased back in 2015. We purchased the property because it's suitable for a hotel, being at the, you know, right off the ramp and considering those all factors, and that's where we wanted to build a hotel because it would be easy for commuters to access the property and so on. The way we have designed the property is we have kept our property pretty much close to the ramp and sitting far inside off the road. We have about six, close to six acres, it's actually less than six acres, which pretty much about three and a half acre or so would be utilized for the property. The rest of the two acres or a little bit more on that would be just kept as the buffer between the property and the residence in the back. So, I don't know if those all facts were even addressed to anyone or not, but I just want to, you know, looking at the comments from, on News Herald, like a hotel could bring XYZ, you know, whatever. It's a brand, branded property, a Marriott hotel. You guys already have a residence in on the next exit. Marriott is number three as of today in the world. So basically, you know, it's not something like a budget hotel which would come in and could be having a lot more reason for residents to be worried about. Another thing, like, yeah, we are looking for a four-story hotel, which basically we would be looking on a height variance. Our top parapet, the topmost height is 55, which is just about the front. I would say like, less than 20% of the building is at that height, which also could be rectified down maybe another five feet or so if we have to. The roof itself would be about at 40 feet with the parapet around there to be about no more than three feet. So, like, overall, the property would be at 43 feet versus 35 feet what's allowed with certain area with the parapet and stuff to be going up higher, which would probably could be brought down to 100, like, to 50 feet rather than 55 feet what's been shown. Another thing, as I mentioned, like, you know, we are considering the fact that we are staying close to the highway, close to the exit, like, at, pretty much at the entrance to stay away from the residence. So, it is not that something is happening middle of the residence or so, and then on top of that, we are ready to keep the buffer, which we had discussed and mentioned about on the informal zoning even before the zoning happened on October 3. But I believe when the meeting on October 3 happened, I don't know if the people who were out there, they were even aware of the facts, what's going on other than just the hotel asking for a zoning change.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now that we've heard from the applicant, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone speaking, wishing to speak in opposition? Ma'am, please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Frances Meinke. I live at 6758 Oakdale Road, which is right off, it's the dead end part of Oakdale, right off of Bellflower Road. So, and I've lived there, I've been a Menner resident for 45 years, so I'm very familiar with the area and also with Menner and very proud of Menner, too. I really like, you know, the parks and all the things that Menner has done. Well, first of all, let me say, location, location, location. I was a federal appraiser for 37 years. I did a lot of the downtown projects. Every project that came in, we would evaluate according to our code of federal regs and our standards. We had housing standards. It had to fit the criteria or else we rejected it. I mean, that's the way, we were very non-biased, you know, and it either was acceptable in the neighborhood or it wasn't. Some of the issues, and I brought these up before, was it's an inharmonious usage in a single-family residential neighborhood. Our neighborhood is predominantly single-family homes, one and possibly some two-story homes. To build a four-story structure here would be an inharmonious land use. It would make us look like the Lilliputians in Gulliver's Travels, you know? You'd look up and, oh, there's this tall, you know, structure. I think it would be better suited in an area like Tyler or maybe a part of Heasley or part of Hendrix where it's more industrial and that. So, it would change the overall character of the neighborhood, and I'm afraid it would result in a lowering of values for our single-family homes, which we've lived in and maintained for many years. The second concern is drainage. Menner has a high water table, and frequently this plot is, you'll see, there's water, there's ducks and that on it, and so there is probability of drainage problems for our, our homes. Most of our homes do not have basements, and I remember in 2006, when there was a lot of flooding, especially in Painesville, we were pretty much okay, the homes, because we had grassy areas around us. But if you get a, a hotel requires massive parking, which is asphalt or cement, whatever, and that would impose, you know, that would take away a lot of the grassy area where the water would drain, and I'm afraid that many of our homes would be subject to extensive drainage. There is another thing, there's an underground river or stream that flows from Little Mountain down there, and it ends in a little, like, well, which a lot of us have water rights to in our original deeds and that, and we have a bundle of rights, so if someone takes away from that legally, they have to compensate all the homeowners for that. But most of us, you know, we just do not want that to happen. We don't want the drainage problems. Another issue is the traffic issues. We live on a dead-end street. Our only access is Bellflower Road. Right now, we have traffic from Menner High and from Lake Catholic. I'm not complaining, I'm just saying that's normal, and we have the daycare center. Now, if you're gonna put an ingress and an egress both on Bellflower, and they have a, they are gonna have a conference room, what if there's a wedding reception and there's a big party? I have neighbors that are 90-some years old on either side of me. God help us if we ever have an emergency where the Menner Police or Fire Department can't get down Bellflower because there's too much traffic going on. Some of the neighbors on Bellflower have complained that they have trouble getting out of their driveways now sometimes at certain hours to get to work. So, this would maybe, you know, create another problem. You'd maybe have to have another traffic lane or whatever and more traffic situation. Another concern is unfortunately hotels tend to have higher rates of crime and sex trafficking and drug trafficking and stuff like that, because you're having, and I've stayed in hotels, I'm not against hotels, okay? I, I think Marriott's a fine company and that, however, we know that, this is right by a daycare center, okay? And there's children that are out and about and that, and I think a lot of the parents might be duly concerned if their children were right by a hotel where there's people coming on a transient basis. So, that's another issue. One of the things I would recommend is having this become a park, kind of like Springbrook, a little neighborhood park, you know, where just some benches and some, maybe a walking trail, and you could name it in honor of anybody.
Ma'am, can you try and, can you try and close it up a little bit?
Yeah, so that's, that's my conclusion, is that it doesn't fit the criteria for our residential neighborhood because of the issues that I have raised, and that's, that's my opinion and that of many of my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody? He beat you up there.
My name is David Love. Address is 7988 View Mountain Drive, Concord, Ohio. My wife and I are owners of Love's Learning Loft. Our number one major concern with this whole thing is safety of the children, and I think we can't guarantee, the owners can't guarantee of the hotel what kind of people may be coming in and out. I mean, that's evident in things that have happened in Las Vegas at hotels, at different areas in the country. Not so much the caliber and how good a hotel it is, you just can't guarantee what's coming in. We have a playground right next to it that can be overlooked, and you can watch the children and size the whole situation up, close access right off the road if you're driving by. We are approaching 200 children in the facility, and it's a lot to watch, it's a lot to care for, and, but we've got a handle on it, but we would not want to add to that issue, you know, other people, transients, whatever, from the hotel. The traffic issue is another concern. I know by our opening the business, we've added more traffic. Impact of a hotel coming in there and the added traffic from that is a worry of ours. It can't go without being said, the neighbors on that street, what they've looked at for years and years and years and had, looking out their front doors, and I don't think it would be fair to them to look across the street and see what I would consider an eyesore. I just don't think that space is where a hotel belongs, and I agree with the lady before me that there's, there's probably more suitable locations for something like this. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else wanting to speak in opposition?
Robin Lockoff, 803.
Why don't you bend that down a little further?
I'm sorry, I'm short. Can't help that. Robin Lockoff, 803 Bellflower. I'm not gonna waste the President and the council's time to repeat everything that was said, but I can tell you there's times, and I live more towards the bend on Bellflower, that I wait eight, nine minutes to get out of my car, just to go to work at 7:00 in the morning. So, besides that and the safety of the children, the daycare, the traffic situation, and the fact that when I bought there, it was residential, then we decided to let it go to B1 so that the daycare could come in, and now we're being asked to go to B2, and I just don't think that's fair, that's not what we wanted. I really think our home values will go down if that hotel exists. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wanting to speak in opposition?
My name is Megan Bailey. I live at 8101 Puritan. It is directly off of Bellflower and the condos. That's another thing with the traffic, that is our only way out of our condos. We have to wait probably 20 minutes every morning with the traffic from both of the schools and the daycare. I'm a mother, I have to worry about not only the safety of the kids at the daycare, but my own daughter, and I have to worry about my animals. I can't imagine walking down the street and seeing all of the nasty things that could happen at a hotel. I don't want to be walking down the street and see cop cars coming up and people being wheeled out on stretchers if there's some sort of problem. I also don't understand why the applicant keeps saying that just because we're next to a ramp, it's a good location. That does not make it a good location. You can find an entrance ramp anywhere, and you can find a lot anywhere to build this hotel. This is where families live, this is where children live, and we should be able to enjoy our lives and not be worrying about who is coming in here and what's happening. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition?
Carol Chesbrough, 8296 Edgewood Road, Menner, Ohio. I appreciate everything that was said before me because that's what I believe in, too. I've lived in a house since 1970, a house that my great-grandfather built, and somebody in the family's always lived there, so I know the neighborhood. And the neighborhood is still a quiet neighborhood in this day and age. We have that school the kids walk to, we have, I see a lot of kids, because I picked my granddaughter up from school who's legally blind, so I know the activity of the kids. And as Mr. Love said, you don't know who's gonna stay at that hotel, and it concerns me very much, because I think the kids need to be protected, and how can you do that? There's adequacy on 306, they have a hotel there, or, and on Heasley, and I can't see why we would want one on Center Street, and it bothers me, and it's near the high school. It just, I'm totally against it, really, and I hope that the people on the panel would understand that for the people that live in this community and, and in our little neighborhood. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak in opposition?
Good evening. My name's Steve Cantano. I live at 6693 Pine Tree Drive, connects Bellflower and Edgewood together. I agree with a lot of the stuff that everyone's already said. Some of my concerns are the resources that the community offers. Added hotel, I'm sure we've all thought about, we'll need more policemen, more firemen, and if we don't add more, we're gonna cut into response times, okay? One of the reasons I love this community is because of our fire department and our police department, okay? Besides the schools. So, I also do plumbing, work for a large plumbing manufacturer, and we do have a drainage issue over in that area, and what I'm concerned, and we have low water pressure. So, a hotel coming in there, they're gonna have another four-to-six inch main, that's gonna reduce water pressure, it's gonna add a lot more water going into the drainage system already. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else speaking in opposition that have something else to add?
Hi, my name is Susan Chupa. I live at 7155 Hart Street. My two boys attend Love's Learning Loft, okay? I trust Anna with my children, so having a hotel next door, while I'm at work, I have to think, okay, is someone on the fourth floor or third floor taking pictures of my children to post them online? You know, I shouldn't have to worry about that. I'm a single mom of those two beautiful boys, and they have behavioral disabilities, which has kicked them out of many daycares, okay? Anna is the last daycare in Menner that my children can go to, and I don't want to have to feel like my kids are unsafe at this daycare, well, where I would pull them out. You know, what would happen with the other parents? You know, are they gonna feel comfortable? What's gonna happen to her business that she worked so hard to build? You know, she does wonders with these children, and in the end, you know, as far as, like, I don't know how much taxes it's gonna bring to Menner, but, and then it's about the children growing and living in, in the society in Menner.
Thank you. Anybody else in opposition?
George Gogan. I live at 6866 Wetherby Drive. Did council hear the minutes or recordings of the Planning Commission meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not gonna reiterate everything that happened there. One thing I noticed, two days after the meeting, the signs came down for the rezoning issue. There were the red square signs, they're gone. I thought they should have still been there to let people know that this is still going on, that it's not a dead issue. I don't know who took them down, or is that something that happens normally? I don't know. The other one was the signs, and the city and the police want to have the scam program initiated, that's with the security cameras and all that. Well, everybody on Bellflower is gonna have to join that program because of the issue with the safety.
Thank you.
Everyone should join that program. It's an excellent program, and it's here to help our police keep everything safe.
Anybody else?
I joined.
Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, we have the applicant here, does the applicant want to respond to any of the comments made by the people?
Do I need to repeat my name again?
No, that's fine.
Well, I didn't make notes of what all was there, but just going back to a few things, okay, a hotel been next to a daycare. Giant Deagles built right next to a daycare, a B2 zoning is approved right next to that daycare, which you don't know what's gonna happen out there. Giant Deagle is a public place, too, where all kind of people show up. So, are people safe out there? Are the kids safe out there? I'm not sure. So, you know, we, we talk about safety, I'm not saying that, you know, a hotel is a bad thing or not a bad thing, but we, at the hotels, too, have our own security system, you know, all cameras and stuff, so, you know, if anything ever has to happen, it's all been recorded. Again, going back to, it's a hotel, a Marriott brand hotel, we're not talking about a Motel Six or a smaller hotel where things do, wrong things do happen on a daily basis. So, you know, just bringing in a hotel is a bad thing. I am in the hotel business last 25 years, and I have over 40-plus hotels, so it's, if it was bad business, I would have not been in the business for this long. So, I don't see that every hotel could be labeled as a bad place to go. The drainage issue is something, if it's already there, that's not my, you know, like, a normal hotel either has a pond for taking care of the drainage, if there's not room for pond, underground drainage is always there, that's the norm, which the drainage is taken care on anywhere, any city. If there is a issue about traffic because of my hotel, and if we have to do that addition of the lane, extend the lane out, we would not mind considering that if we have to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The council is in receipt of all correspondence received pertaining to this matter. This public hearing is adjourned. New legislation. I'm sorry, tabled legislation. Ordinance number 19-0-068.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Menner 2006 as amended and the official zoning map by rezoning of approximately 16.15 acres of land from R4 Single Family Residential District to RVG Village Green District for 40 residential lots in the proposed Echo Hill Manor subdivision at 8180 and 8188 Garfield Road.
Move to. I have a motion to. President? Yes. I'd move that we remove this from the table. Second. Ordinance number 19-0-068 is removed from the table. Okay, can I have a vote on that?
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
I believe we have some people here to speak on this legislation. Would they like to come to the podium? Pardon?
Let me identify myself, apologize. My name is.
Wait a second, do you wanna comment on this first before the?
No, Mr. President, I think we've already gone through the initial public hearing unless the council has any questions. The administration, you're, you've all been provided a copy of the zoning analysis.
Does the council have any questions, administration, before we move? Okay. I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
May I please the council, my name is Kenneth Fisher. I'm an attorney. My business address is 50 Public Square, Suite 2100, Cleveland, Ohio, and I'm here this evening on behalf of the Andrews family, specifically Charles Andrews, trustee, the owner of the subject property, the proposed Echo Hill Manor subdivision. Three separate parcels identified on the agenda located at 8180, 8188 Garfield Road, which has been owned by the Andrews family since approximately 1965. I have a overview that depicts the poster board, that depicts the, the neighborhood. This is the subject property. Is there a way that I can?
If you, yeah, if you put it down, it'll go on the.
Let me do this, I haven't. And put it here. Got it? Yeah, I'll use the. That works, yeah. I think it's the wrong way, but I'll, give me a second. Okay, so, the subject property is right here, and on this side would be, to the north, Belglow Lane, which was in fact developed by Scott Andrews, who's here tonight in 2004. To the south would be Eleanor Court, and across the street would be the Newell Creek Development, which is zone C1 PUD. In 2004, the Belglow neighborhood, consisting of half-acre lots in conformity with the R4 zoning, was in fact developed by Scott Andrews. There remains one unsold lot for the last 15 years. In 2005, the interchange, 615, was opened off of Interstate 90, which would be to the east, which started to change the major characteristics of the, of the neighborhood. The zoning ultimately for the Newell Creek parcel, C1, was changed at the request of the developer. was changed at the request of the developer property owner to a PUD to allow a variety of mixed uses, which includes, as you can see, Avery Dennison Facility, one of the largest employers in the city of Mentor, other industrial office, commercial, medical, senior living, and approximately 250 cluster units, which are consistent with the RVG request to the RVG Village Green Zoning District. And those 250 units are directly across the street in part from the, from the subject property, which again is zoned R4 Single Family. The Cleveland Clinic also has plans to build an emergency room, I believe, on the Newell Creek PUD parcel, Zone C1 PUD. In terms of the development criteria and patterns, on April 19, 2011, the City Council adopted ordinance number 11-024, wherein the 2011 Comprehensive Master Plan was adopted as the formal development policy for the city, which specifically prefers RVG development as detailed on page 65 of your comprehensive plan, and I'll quote briefly. "A maximum density for a site that is greater than the R1, R2, R3, and R4 districts should be permitted to provide incentive for RVG development by providing the potential for an equal or greater financial return compared to a conventional subdivision on the site. The plan recommends a maximum density of three to four units per acre on the entire site, not including undeveloped areas, utility pipelines, right-of-way wetlands, ponds, and streams." In fact, the 2011 Comprehensive Plan was adopted by ordinance that requires that the city comply with the duly enacted development criteria. Pursuant to public records requests filed and complied with promptly by the City of Mentor, since 2004, the city has rezoned property to RVG for nine separate developments, including the Woodlands of Mentor in 2017, with four rezoning applications for RVG currently pending. The only example that the property owners aware of, of a denial to RVG, is the subject property. I also want to point out that in regard to this property, the C1 PUD, the Newell Creek, when that property was permitted, Scott Andrews, representative of the Andrews family here tonight, opposed the change because of the dramatic impact it had on the neighborhood, the characteristics, and specifically the ability to develop the subject property under the R4 one-half acre, two-unit-per-acre, perstructure-per-acre density. And again, that's an important point. The neighborhood has significantly changed since the State Route 615 interchange was built, and specifically Newell Creek. In support of the directives of the 2011 Comprehensive Plan, only one new R4 development has occurred in the city since 2005, and that's South Mentor Estates, a 16-lot subdivision. The proposed Echo Hill Development has 40 residential sublots. Site plan that was submitted to the Planning Commission complies with all of the R4 zoning requirements, doesn't require any variances. And I'd also like to point out that in terms of the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting, which took place last August 22, there was no disagreement from the staff report in terms of the request, although the staff report minutes, or minutes from the August 22 meeting indicate there was opposition from residents that live, I believe mostly on Belglow. I wasn't there, that believe perhaps that by changing the zoning from R4 to the RVG Village Green District, their homes will somehow be devalued. In fact, there isn't any evidence whatsoever that the existing residents zoned R4 one-half acre on either Belglow or Eleanor will be devalued in any way as a result of the requested rezoning and the clustering that appears on the site plan that was submitted. In fact, there's green space, there's buffering. And further in terms of the development criteria, the zoning code of the City of Mentor has changed. You're no longer allowed to go 800 feet with cul-de-sacs. It's 600 feet. When the Belglow Lane Development Subdivision was constructed and developed by Scott Andrews seated behind me, you could go 800 feet, you can't anymore. The depth on the subject parcel is 1,000 feet, which creates even more hardship on the, on the property owner. In terms of the units and what they look like, this is what was submitted to the Planning Commission. Beautiful units, value, fair market value, selling price estimated $400,000-plus, completely consistent with the values, home values on both, well, both the adjoining R4 developments of Belglow Lane and Eleanor Court. Here's another rendering. Before I introduce Judy, Judy, excuse me, Julie Lindor, who's an AIC certified planner. I believe you have a report and a resume. It was sent to your very fine clerk earlier in the week. If not, I have copies for you. I'd like to just make a couple of final points here. The proposed Echo Hill Development consists of 40 residential lots within the two-and-a-half unit-per-acre density as opposed to the two-acre, one-half acre, two-unit, one-half acre density in the R4. It's completely consistent with the directives of the 2011 Comprehensive Plan and the material changes that have occurred since the State Route 615 interstate construction and specifically the Newell Creek PUD zoning that this city approved at the request or the directive of the developer property owner, and I believe under at least some auspices of legal action at the time. No negative comments for disapproval was received from the Mentor, City of Mentor Planning Staff. No variances are required to the RVG regulations. The same civil engineer that did the layout for the City of Woodlands, for the city, for the Woodlands Project, excuse me, in Mentor in 2017, did this layout. And the selling prices are consistent, $400,000-plus with the adjoining residential subdivisions that are, are for. There is no economically viable way to develop the subject property as currently zoned. I believe as Mr. Siemens aware, Nick versus Township of Scott. June 21, the U.S. Supreme Court said taking claims can now be brought directly in federal court. You don't have to any longer exhaust state court remedies. That's not what the developer property owner, the Andrews family wants. They have been in this community for many, many years. They want to work cooperatively with the council, the planning department, the engineer, and do a development that's nice and consistent with the standards in this neighborhood as it currently exists. Julie Lindor is here tonight. She is a, again, as I say, AICP certified planner. She has a report which she would like to have the opportunity to summarize. In terms of her qualifications, she just recently completed the development code for the City of Painesville. She is the planner for the Village of Chagrin Falls. She's represented many communities throughout Ohio and has also provided testimony in, me, provided testimony as an expert in many different situations throughout the state. So, I would like to allow, if you don't mind Julie to come up and perhaps give a summary of her report as well as answer any questions that you may have concerning, well, the legal and factual issues presented by this rezoning request.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Julie Lindner, L-I-N-D-N-E-R. My address is 7548 Valerie Lane Hudson. I'm happy to be here tonight to talk about some of the planning issues surrounding this property and this application. So, I'm speaking on behalf of the applicant here tonight. Mr. Fisher referred to your Comprehensive Plan that was adopted in the city in 2011. As a matter of policy, the development under the RVG zoning is the preferred alternative to traditional single-family subdivision by policy and by your legislative action. When I look at your plan and I look at your zoning code, as a planner, I see that you are nudging development in that manner. You give a slight density bonus to RVG developments. You have several situations in your Comprehensive Plan where you call for compact development, alternative forms of housing. And so, in the development world, when you're trying to have a predictable regulatory environment that you can look at in order to propose your projects, one, some of the things you look at are the zoning code and the Comprehensive Plan. And this zoning code and this Comprehensive Plan prefers compact development, connectivity, smaller lots, more housing options. I admire that in a community that's really in keeping with sound planning principles. So, you really are on the edge of what current planning practices says is a good thing for community. Your Comprehensive Plan also embraces smart growth concepts. And those are concepts that turn away from the traditional large lot zoning on a cul-de-sac. Smart growth recognizes the benefits of open spaces, both fiscally and environmentally. So, the Mentor Comprehensive Plan encourages homes to provide a wide array of choices for college graduates, empty nesters, and those in need of assisted living. That's page 116. And according to your zoning ordinance, Section 115501, that sets forth the purposes of the various zoning districts, both the R4 and the RVG zoning districts are called low-density districts in your purpose statements. As was stated, the maximum density in R4 is two units per acre and 2.5 units per acre in RVG. So, in the simplest terms, if you have a development in R4 that would allow 20 units, a development on that same land in RVG would allow 25 units. That's a very, very slight increase, just five more units. But it would also give you 15% minimum of open space. So, you would have that to benefit your entire community. So, it is consistent with sound planning principles to allow this type of a density bonus. So, you've done that. In 2010, you made an amendment to the design criteria of your subdivision regulations and you memorialized your policy regarding cul-de-sac lengths and connectivity of neighborhoods. So, going forward, new subdivisions shall have streets that interconnect to existing neighborhoods and limit cul-de-sac lengths to 600 feet or less unless they're waived by the Planning Commission. Again, that's, that's very sound planning. That's in keeping with smart growth and good planning practice. That was a 2010. It talks about providing for continuation of existing streets. And I'd noticed when I was looking through some of your staff reports for other projects, that seemed to be a continuing observation that your staff was making, that there was a need to connect neighborhoods, to minimize the number of cul-de-sacs, to try to provide that general connectivity throughout your community. Their code now says connections shall be provided to adjoining properties. They talk about interconnections in neighborhoods. They talk about limiting cul-de-sacs. So, this is a further indication of your intent to embrace this smaller lot, more compact development pattern. And just in July of this year, this council passed an ordinance that replaced Chapter 1158, the planned unit development, with a planned development overlay district. That was recommended in a six-to-nothing affirmative vote from your Planning Commission. Well, that particular chapter actually embraces a density of four units per acre, which is twice that of your R4 district. And it gives the Planning Commission discretion to allow even a greater density beyond this stated maximum. So, through the comprehensive planning process and your zoning code, it is clear smaller lots, compact development, open space seem to be the preferred development pattern in, in Mentor. This project supports that pattern. So, looking at development patterns in the area, Mr. Fisher went over some of the past decisions that have been made in the past rezonings for RVG. So, I won't go into those. But I will say that I also noticed that even still, if you look at, you may say, well, this was a past and we're thinking about changing whether or not we approve of the compact development pattern. You have Brookview Reserve, which is a 50-acre development. That's in the pipeline to be rezoned to RVG. You have this particular project. You have another project called Cardinal Meadows, which is again, another rezoning to RVG. You have this big project, this both-in-a-state development, which could rezone 187 acres to this planned development, which the residential component is very much like the RVG. It's a higher density. Well, in this fact, it could be four units per acre. So, you're still moving forward in embracing that type of a development pattern. Now, the reference was made to this, the project being very similar to the Woodlands of Mentor. And here's a sketch. The top image is, is the proposed project and this is the Woodlands of Mentor. And you can see, there's no cul-de-sac. There are two access points. And there's open space around the outside of the area. So, this project is very similar to one that was successfully rezoned to RVG. So, it's my opinion that these are not materially different projects. So, if it made good planning sense to approve one, it makes good planning sense to approve the other. There really is no sound rationale for doing otherwise. Now, the character of the area, as Mr. Fisher talked about, has changed dramatically. In looking at the history of development in Mentor, I was taken by the things that happened in 2005 that set in motion a drastic change in the development of this area. Of course, the 615 interchange, which was developed. So, you've got, you've got the interchange, the interchange here was opened up this whole area for development. And also in 2005 is when you began to see the massive Newell Creek project start from Phase 1 to Phase 12 that they're on now. It really dominates this area with a variety of uses. So, it has been the thing that has drastically changed the character of the area. Another element is the construction of, the construction of Norton Parkway, connecting 615 down to Garfield Road. In fact, the connection, the terminus of Garfield Road and Norton Parkway is at the subject property. And therefore, because of your code and the way you have to space your roads, this Norton Parkway actually dictates where the curb cut on the subject property must be so that you can create a full intersection there. So, that is a drastic change. And if you can see my little note here on the, this is the subject property. And it really is kind of like the hole in the donut. You have a couple of R4 developments here, but you have institutional, you have condominiums, you have another institutional, you have the school, you have Deepwood Drive. This is all owned by Lake County, the Mentor School Board. You have apartments here. This is another development. This is that proposed Brookview Reserve, RVG development of 50 acres. To the east, again, you've got the Newell Creek- To the east, again, you've got the Newell Creek clustered-type housing with open space. You've got Norton Parkway. There is an industrial site here, office, an event center, assisted living or senior citizen services. You have a proposed hospital here. You have senior living apartments, senior living, assisted living. And further here to the east will be this Bothin property. And the proposal for that, it would extend Norton eastward to what is being referred to in that application as a town center. So you're going to have, this road is going to be a dynamic corridor that's going to further change the development of the area. So it's clear that there has been a lot of change since the last single-family development was, under R4, was constructed in this city. So I think we've pretty much covered most of it. I think from an environmentally sound standpoint, we're talking about the preservation of open space, you're talking about less impervious surface, you're talking about the protection of tree cover, you're talking about efficiencies in delivering public services when you have this type of development that does not have a cul-de-sac on it. So in the end, substantial justice balances the interests of a property owner with those of the community, and with the neighborhood, and with adjoining properties. This council must determine if objections to the rezoning have merit, or if they're just an effort to prevent a property owner from exercising their property rights, from having, them having the same use and enjoyment of their property as the surrounding property owners have. In conclusion, I've reviewed the codified ordinances of the City of Mentor as they pertain to the R4 and RVG zoning. I've looked at the zoning map, the 2011 comprehensive plan, records of the Lake County auditor, and a site visit to the area. It's my professional opinion as a planner that the current zoning classification of the subject property as R4 is not consistent with sound planning principles and applicable Ohio law, in that the comprehensive plan and the zoning code recognize and support development of housing that is an alternative to the traditional large lot subdivision on a typical R4 district. The City of Mentor has embraced and shown a strong preference for RVG development as a matter of policy and through your legislative action. Therefore, it is unreasonable to deny the subject property the right to develop in a manner that is consistent with prevailing development pattern. The last subdivision developed under the R4 zoning was approved by the City of Mentor in 2001 and recorded with the county auditor in 2005, 14 years ago. During the same time period, the city has approved rezoning for RVG developments nine times and one rezoning for planned development. An additional three rezonings to RVG and one rezoning to planned development are pending. The character of the area has changed since the construction of the I-90 interchange, the development of Newell Creek to the east, and the location of commercial, industrial, and high-density residential uses to the west. Rezoning is necessary in order for the property owner to have beneficial use of the property consistent with ownership rights in other properties in this vicinity. Thank you.
Thank you. As promised, any of the residents, I think we have a couple that have asked to speak before council on this matter. Would you please step forward?
My name is John Cabot. I live at 7989 Eleanor Court. My street borders the Andrews property, as does Belglow Lane. Wow, that was a lot of information. But before I go any further, I want to congratulate Mr. Donovan on his win last night as councilman. But otherwise, this has been the same proposal for the last four meetings that I've gone to. I had the same objections. But tonight, it only looks like I have four minutes, four minutes to voice them. So I'll be brief. Very reason we have zoning ordinance is to prevent this kind of development in our backyard. I wish I could borrow the gentleman's picture of the overlying area, which included Newell Creek and the property that's in question. That's not possible. Let me say this. There is absolutely no comparison. All of the properties that I know of that have been mentioned are self-contained or do not back up to pre-existing properties as this one does to Eleanor Court and to Belglow Lane. Geography cannot be changed. This community is developing. I've lived in it for 26 years on Eleanor Court. All of this progress and all of this development hasn't had a negative impact on my lifestyle, until the Andrews are now talking about building 40 houses on tiny lots behind my house on 12 acres. Newell Creek was approximately 400 acres. Bolton Estate is also hundreds of acres. And other properties that were mentioned are also much larger than 12. The problem is not that their proposal, the kind of house and the size of the lot is wrong, it's just wrong for that 12 acres, which is wedged in between two existing properties that have been there for 15 years and 26 years. That's what I mostly disapprove of. Again, I know I only have four minutes. This proposal also included a village green element. They want to build a barbecue pavilion in the woods, right behind my neighbors to the left. This is going to be tucked into the woods nicely. They're going to have about six or more barbecue things there. I don't know. Let me ask you, what could go wrong with that? It's ridiculous. Fire! One thing leads to another. It's going to be fun to go out there and have a barbecue, and then you're going to have a bunch of kids saying, boy, this is great, let's have a bonfire. Is there any kind of regulation on the use of that kind of a facility? I'm going to have to look at it, and I'm going to have to smell it. I'm going to have to hear it. Is it going to be use for a few people, a dozen people? Is it going to become the designated smoking area? Is it going to be for clambeaks? How many people are going to be there? Are they going to have alcohol? Are they going to have music? What are the hours for usage? 24/7? Now, this is real convenient. It's tucked into the woods. Just think, I don't know if the Andrews have any children of their own, but anybody who knows about adolescents and teenagers doesn't create a venue like this, hidden from the view of their parents, but in the view of all the residents who live behind them. It's ridiculous. There's a lot of other things that are ridiculous about that, and I suggest you start with your police department and fire department and ask them if they think this is a safe idea. It's a stupid idea. Now, it might just be a matter of taste, but when I also hear about these clock towers that they want to adorn the entrances with, and at the same breath liken them and their white fence to Gates Mills and Hunting Village, it's laughable. You only see these kinds of things in boat marinas and in apartments, not anywhere in the City of Mentor or Gates Mills or Hunting Valley. There are just so many other things I object to. I don't have the time to go all over them, and I'm really upset about this. Somebody has finally done their homework. I've been to four of the last six meetings. Four of those planning commission meetings, they were unanimously voted down, because that committee was being sensitive to the fact that you've got Belglow, you've got Eleanor Court, and no matter what's happened all around us, it is different than what they're talking about. Norton Parkway, Newell Creek development is bordered off. I don't even have to see it if I don't want to. They talk about Deepwood, they talk about the school, they talked about something else around there. They have zero impact on the people on Belglow or Eleanor Court. If Bolton property is developed likewise, that'll have zero impact on us. They have no ability to create natural barriers or man-made barriers, because the lots are going to be so small that they can't even support the trees that are on the property now. Hundred-year-old trees and more are going to be taken down. The back of the houses on that property are going to be 25 feet away from my property line. Mr. Donovan, I would estimate you're 25 feet away from me. Do you want to look into my house at that distance?
No.
I don't want to look into yours either. I value my privacy. The people on Eleanor Court value their privacy. The people on Belglow value their privacy. Scott Andrews lives in Regency Woods. They don't call it Regency Woods for nothing. I've been told that he's got so many trees in the front of his house, you can't even see it. Likewise, Charles Andrews lives in Silver Fox, another upscale neighborhood in Kirtland. Large acres, large houses, a lot of privacy. These gentlemen seem to have a hard time figuring out what constitutes a legitimate village green. All they got to do is walk in their neighborhood. Trees, natural trees. In front of Regency Woods, you don't see a clock tower. You see a sign about three feet long and about one feet wide, and it says Regency Woods, period. That's it. And then what do you see from then on in? Trees everywhere. Professional landscape, big houses. That's why they live there. They value their privacy. The problem is, they don't value my privacy. They don't value the people on Belglow's privacy. And they don't even value the privacy of the people who are going to live in the houses that they build. Just because people choose to live on small lots doesn't mean they don't value their privacy. It doesn't mean they don't want to look out their window and see trees. It doesn't mean that they don't care that I can see into their house and hear and smell everything that's going on in there. It's kind of an insult. It's condescending. They value their privacy. The people who are going to live in whatever is built there want the same privacy that we all want. Probably used up my four minutes, kind of exhausted right now. Thank you for listening. I can say one last thing. Ordinances like this, we have, we have zoning ordinances to avoid this kind of a development being built in our backyards. The people on Belglow, the people on Eleanor Court, and I would venture to say the people in Mentor would all disapprove of this, this development. It's, it's not like they described it. If that map was, map was still up there, I would show you the sliver of property that they're talking about. It is not the right site for that kind of a development. It works in Newell Creek. It doesn't work in Echo Glen. It is a completely different situation, completely different property. Now I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. [applause] Is there anybody? I think we have one other person who wanted to speak on this issue.
What's that? My name's Robert Stratman. I live at 7982 Belglow Lane. My, the, the back of my lot would be on the north side of this development. It's with a little fear and trepidation that I speak here tonight, particularly since Mr. Fisher's here. Since the last council meeting, I have received a letter from the Andrews family, basically threatening me with legal action if I don't cease and desist from opposing this. For the record, I remain opposed to this zoning change. At the time my wife and I purchased our property, we asked the Andrews family what zoning on the undeveloped, what was the zoning on the undeveloped tract? We were told it was zoned R4, which is in fact what we're talking about. At that time, at no time did I state, since this has started in June, at no time have I stated, suggested, implied, nor did I ever infer that the Andrews family provided me with any kind of a guarantee as to what the zoning would be on that property behind me going forward. I, I bought the property knowing it was R4, knowing that, yeah, it could change in the future, but I would kind of trusted that the zoning process here in the City of Mentor, given that Eleanor Court is to the south of it and that our street's to the north of it. If you look at their picture, you can see that our, our half-acre lots and nice-sized houses. I continue to take umbrage with the fact they throw out this $400,000 number. I built my house two years ago, and I paid well over $600,000. And there are a number of houses on our street that are over $500,000. Our set-offs, when we bought the lot, we were told that we had to have a 2,800 square-foot minimum on the house, that we had to have the normal R4 set-offs, which are 100 feet wide, 60 feet front setback, 50-foot rear setback, 15 feet on the side. Now, what we're cramming in between these two streets with the RVG is they're saying for starters, our lots have to be 22,000 square feet. These will only have to be between 8,000 and 14,000 square feet. The set-offs will be 68-foot wide lot, 25-foot setback on the front, 25-foot setback to the back if it's the sub-boundary for the property, and only nine-foot setbacks between the houses. I would submit to you that that is not in the character of the neighborhood to the south of this, nor is it in the character of the neighborhood to the north, my street. Further to that, they keep bringing up the point about Newell Creek. Newell Creek is a really nice development, but it is not sandwiched between anything. You have Route 84 on the north side, you have 615 on the east side, you have Norton Parkway, and you have Garfield Road. There, that was not sandwiched in between any kind of residential. So I would submit that the, that the comparison is just not fair. And further to that, Newell Creek is a very nice development. I understand that. It's got a clubhouse, it has a swimming pool, it has three large ponds, so there was lots of acreage in which to put paths and provide the kind of green area that RVG supports or requests. What the earlier gentleman said, what we saw at the zoning committee provided for green area and things for those residents in this area would have available to them for recreation is laughable when compared to what is in Newell Creek. You can't even make that comparison. I am concerned about what that development will have on my property value going forward. I don't know where the $400,000 number comes from with regard to Belglow Lane. I think that's just laughable, but I obviously don't have all the experience of this team behind me. I think finally, the last thing I would say on this is, I believe the elephant in the room is that by pursuing this zoning, zoning change, I'm sorry, the Andrews family obviously will get more value for that property. And that's, they're right. I have no problem with them pursuing the zoning change, trying to get more value for their property. They own it, they're allowed to do that. What I do take umbrage with, though, is the belief that this will not be detrimental to those of us who already bought our property from the same family when it was zoned R4. And so this zoning change will have a detrimental effect. I, I don't accept their, their submission that if I put those houses that they showed you, my house with a side entry garage and the sized lot, it's not comparable. They had a memo in the last zoning committee meeting that they submitted in there, where they stated that all that we're provided with in Belglow Lane is more grass to mow. Well, my, my house is 2,800 square feet. That house they showed you is nowhere near the minimum that I have to have on Belglow Lane from the lot that I did buy from the Andrews family. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Thank you. [applause] Counsel, any, any questions, comments?
We'll approve.
Second.
Julie?
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
No.
Mr. Donovan?
No.
Mrs. Dowling?
No.
Mr. Kirchner?
Mr. President, just a quick comment. I guess I'm playing the devil's advocate, because I, the issue I have is, we have consistently approved RVG developments that abutted R4 developments. And some of the reasons that were given by our commission members, I'm sort of at odds with them, because they didn't really clarify what their concerns is. I think there was more of a concern about the open space that was, that they requested or that they were concerned over. And the only, the only thing I have, the problem I have, is I wish there would have been another chance for this body to look at other alternatives for this rezoning tonight in the RVG format. So I'm voting yes.
Following Mr. Kirchner, I would make a comment too, as far as I could tell from, it follows all the requirements of our current code and our, and our comprehensive plan. And saying that, not that I, I believe we have to follow our code and our plan, and based on that, I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes. Vote yes.
Mr. Landau?
No.
Following the vote, the issue fails on a vote of four to three.[1784.51][1784.51][applause] New legislation. Ordinance number 19-0-083. Ordinance number 19-0-083.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended and the official zoning map by rezoning of approximately 6.02 acres of land from B1 Community Service District to B2 General Business District at 8346 Bellflower Road.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Kirchner.
I have a question for the applicant, if he's available. Mr. Patel, when you purchased the property, were you aware that you needed a rezoning to build a hotel?
Yes.
So you bought the property on a if come that you needed a rezoning in order to get this hotel?
Yes. I purchased the B1 property, which I assumed, you know, I'm in a commercial district and trying to rezone, which that zoning does not qualify the hotel, but still, it's a commercial property.
I know you've mentioned you've got extensive background in real estate. So is that standard procedure when you, to not get a contingency on purchase of a property, contingent on getting a rezoning?
It depends. This property we had purchased because it was, as I said, like it fits outside, pretty much not looking, obviously the residents are concerned, but I've, the way I looked at it is, it's next to a business, so basically, you know, there should not be much of an issue. That's where we didn't put any contingents. Otherwise, we would have had some concerns.
Okay. So you, and my final question, so you purchased in that, in that respect, knowing that there was a significant amount of residential in the area, but you felt you could go forward and you were confident you could get a rezoning under the circumstances of B1?
Well, because right at the junction and going further on 615 Center Street, pretty much you see a lot more commercial out there. So sitting right out there at the corner, it feels that it is pretty much a commercial property. Where you, and then, as I said, like, you know, we are, we had talked about keeping a buffer between the residents and the hotel, which I guess, I'm not sure if even that was ever been brought up, because I know on the informal zoning, we had mentioned, we had been questioned about what and what not, and we did responded to things, what and how our plan goes. But when the planning came, when the planning meeting happened, I believe it was just, I was not there at the meeting, but it was just like, with the crowd out there, it was just like, okay, who all is against? It was not, the applicant was not the one to speak first, that this is how we are planning and this is what it is, but it was like, who is against the zoning change? So it's like, I don't know what's in there, but it, I felt like it was not even presented the way it should have presented. Today, I got a chance to speak first, which I'm grateful to you guys, but I guess that day it was not. So even today, the residents do know that we had planned for a hotel, that's about it. And just, you know, like few things. Again, like I know I didn't make notes, but I do recall, like, somebody said, there's a well. Yeah, that well is gonna be there. That area is something which is what's been kept as a buffer not to be touched. The hotel height, there are tall trees out there which is not even gonna be removed or anything on that two-plus acres, which basically is gonna hide the entire hotel. So, you know, and a B1 zoning is good for a 35-feet building. So if a hotel is 43 feet overall, and then, you know, if I can have the parapet to be about 50 and sitting right close to the ramp, it is not something you're sitting in your backyard and finding a big giant building in front of you. Yeah, there are things to say, but if I look at how and what it's gonna be, I feel like we are trying to keep our hotel away from people as much as we could. But, and then again, like, it's not like I am looking around for another suitable property, but if I could find something with the price about what I paid, I have no issues on moving anywhere else, as long as it's suitable for a hotel. I cannot go two miles down an exit for a hotel. So, you know, those all things are the fact, what we consider for a hotel, and that is why even to begin with, we have chose this. So if I can fit or find something within next couple of months in the City of Mentor, I'll probably still look for and come back to the planning with some other property. If not, I would have to, I have no other choice than to move my investment somewhere else, you know, which, I am a businessperson, I have hotels, I do this all the time, and with my major license, going out three miles down either side, it's still gonna be considered my license to be good. So I don't see that I have any issues. But again, I feel like, again, City is not concerned about money they would make, but I feel like City would be letting go 350,000 a year, which I guess it's not big for City. And so for me too, if I have to move somewhere else, I'm gonna do my business what I would. So, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Patel, you're fine sitting there. The ordinance they had before us was completely different from this ordinance. That ordinance dealt with family that has owned that land, that wants to develop their land, and they've owned it longer than we've been a city, number one. Number two, RVG is basically an overlay district for residential zoning. And the whole idea was designed to fit an area, so it's not as much of a cookie cutter approach, so that it fit the property, more green space, things of that nature. And if done correctly, like Garfield condominiums at the end of Presley and Mentor Avenue, it could be a very positive asset to the community. That was, came from the administration with a positive feedback, and then it came out of Planning Commission with a negative feedback. The applicant chose to bring it to us. And here you saw in council, which we needed a 6-1 vote to overrule Planning Commission, that it was 4-3 no, because as Mr. Krieger and Mr. Kirchner said, it obeyed and went with all of our ordinances in place. So it really came down to what we feel like is the best fit for that neighborhood, and we took the vote. Where this starts, it started on day one because you bought property that is zoned B1, which is community service. Next door, the Love Agency is classified as a community service. They did not need, someone mentioned that we changed the zoning. There's no zoning ever changed. They were given a conditional use permit so that they could operate their business under that zoning. But the case was closed when you came to the City of Mentor and you bought the property and you applied and you wanted to put a hotel, which is, which needs to have the zoning of B2 General Business. We appreciate your time, we appreciate your investment, and we gave you due process through the administration, through Planning Commission, and now through council. But it does not fit, the hotel does not fit B1 zoning. It needs to be B2 zoning. Okay. So I just want to make sure that you understand.
And that's what I said, like, if I could find something still in the next two months, if my eligibility matters, I will also, if I can still be a part of Mentor, but if not, I'll be voting no.
Okay. But thank you. But I, when the vote comes, as you could tell by my statement and try and explain the situation to everyone in the room, I will be voting no. Thank you.
In the process, that's where I understand how things did happen.
If you're gonna contend, you have to come to the microphone, because our people can't record it.
Mr. President.
Well, with the process, I kinda came to know what was the past. I didn't knew about the past, how things had happened at the property. Otherwise, I would have not even got into what I have. It's just, as I said, it never had been an issue in the past on anywhere, you know, going from one zone to the other, if we ever had to deal with. So it was, considering that was the fact that we purchased the property. Again, what was the history of the property 16 years ago? I had no idea until we started the process and got into. So again, I understand where you guys come from, and I do respect that, but I just had to put my case, what I'm trying to, and if there is any race. If not, as I said, like, I would consider myself to have two months to find something within the City of Mentor. If not, I would probably go to a neighboring city and try to find something.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Blake?
Mr. Patel, before you sit down, can I just ask one more question? Not to beleaguer this a whole lot, but is this a plan that you bought before the Planning Commission for an informal, like, three years ago?
Well, it was just when we purchased the property.
Oh, no, no, this was prior to your purchasing the property, wasn't it?
It was. That's when I'm saying, like, when we put a condition, but because we were, as I said, like, it was a 1031 purchase and we were in the process, I, with my past experience, it was just because I was still purchasing a business, business location, like a commercial location.
I was, I was on Planning Commission at the time, and I think I sat down there, and I can remember being the one giving you a lot of negative feedback on this because of the location adjacent to residential properties, adjacent to children's daycare. And honestly, I was very surprised that following that, that was just an informal. You didn't come back for the structured zoning meetings that would have led up the ladder. But I was surprised that you bought that property.
Well, as I said, it was a 1031 transaction and in the, with the past history, going from a single zone change has never been any issue anywhere else. I learned something new in Mentor, but that's the fact I bought it.
I was just shocked that you bought that.
So, you know, I am sitting on with a million-dollar investment, which, again, with what I am doing, I feel like it's okay, you know?
Okay.
Life moves on, and I would move on. So, thank you.
Okay. Counsel, any other amateur questions?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Move to suspend, yes.
Mr. Blake?
To suspend, yes.
Yes. Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
No.
Ordinance number 19-0-083 has failed.
An ordinance to authorize transfers of funds and revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Are less exciting. Mr. Malachek, please.
This is exciting.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. I'll try to keep this short. Members of council, you have before you an ordinance to approve the temporary cash advance and applicable appropriation revision for the current 2019-2020 CDVG program in the amount of $153,766. This amount will be returned to the general fund upon reimbursement of expenditures. And in addition, a $425.06 increase in appropriations and decrease within the state grant for a court grant fund. I recommend approval. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number 19-0-084 has been approved.
Page two.
Ordinance number 19-0-085.
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an economic development grant with South Shore Controls.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malachek, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. This is the first of two economic development grants we have on the agenda tonight, and this is also the first of two that we've been considering for South Shore Controls, but this is the only one for them on the agenda this evening. You may be familiar with South Shore Controls. They took over the old county utilities garage out in Perry, Ohio, and they are now coming here to Mentor. They had 46 employees in 2018 and payroll in excess of $1 million, and they are in the process of finishing up their building on Pinecone Drive. We are asking for a $10,000 one-time economic development grant to assist them with moving expenses.
Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number 19-0-085 has passed. Ordinance number 19-0-086.
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an economic development grant with Carver Financial Services, Inc.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are certainly happy to see Carver Financial continuing to expand in our old village district. Mr. Malachek.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. This is the concluding ordinance. If you recall, we've just approved a CRA for Carver Financial, and this would allow them to also access our economic grant program for $10,000 for technology infrastructure with their building expansion, which will result in additional payroll and additional employees and jobs for Mentor.
Mr. President, if I could just add something too. I think it's worth noting that it wasn't that many years ago that this council adopted the Old Village CRA, and this is a pretty good example. Now, this is their second expansion, and you've seen a few other projects go through here. It's working as intended, and it's been a real boon to the Old Village area.
Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number 19-0-086 has passed. Ordinance number 19-0-087.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to Vector Construction Company for the bridge number LAK3060691 repairs over State Route 2 Improvement Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Swigger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. Two bids were opened on Friday, October 4th, for the State Route 306 Bridge over State Route 2 Repair Project. The bids received were comprised of the following components. A base bid for repairs to the existing guardrail, installation of new vinyl-coated fencing with City of Mentor name and seal, patching a bridge, the bridge parapet, sealing of concrete, of the concrete parapet with epoxy urethane combination, and sealing the concrete sidewalk with a non-epoxy sealant. Alternate 1 consisted of sealing all concrete surfaces with a non-epoxy sealer and acrylic stain. And alternate 2 consisted of sidewalk and curb repair and painting the steel curb plate on the bridge. Reviewing the base bid and alternates, the base bid plus alternate 2 is being recommended for the project. The epoxy urethane coating system is extremely durable, has become an industry standard for sealing of concrete surfaces and bridge painting. It is expected to outperform an acrylic stain. Also, the curb face plate is in need of painting. Two bids were received for a base bid plus alternate 2. They range from a low bid of approximately $385,000 to a high bid of approximately $423,000. The engineer's opinion of probable construction cost is $331,000. The low bid is approximately 16% over the engineer's estimate. The low bidder for the base bid plus alternate 2 is Vector Construction Company of Youngstown, Ohio. Their bid was reviewed and found to be in conformance with all contract requirements. They're experienced and qualified to perform the work within the contract. It's therefore recommended that the contract be awarded to Vector Construction Company in the amount of $384,975.50. It is anticipated that work will begin in December with a project completion specified for June 26th. Two-way traffic will be maintained on State Route 306 and State Route 2 with off-peak lane closures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
The 0691 is a numbering system that typically refers to lane mileage distance from a point in Ohio. So, it's a...
It's an engineering thing.
It's a location numbering system that the state has used.
It's from the Cuyahoga Lake line, 6.0, whatever the miles is, in...
Really, okay.
To Lake County.
All right, I learned something tonight.
Reinformative.
Kind of like numbering a fire engine or squad. Okay. Yes. Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Ordinance number 19-0-087 has passed. Ordinance number 19-0-088.
An ordinance amending Section 125.05D of the codified ordinances of the city of Mentor 2006 as amended related to emergency medical service rates and regulations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac?
Thank you, Mr. President. And what this ordinance does essentially is bring us about middle of the pack or so in Lake County in terms of the charges related to EMS transport. This obviously is an important revenues force for us, but due to our limitations on what we actually collect, both through insurance providers, through Medicare, and through those that we just never collect from, really, this won't result in any significant increase, but we do want to keep pace. It's been, Chief, how many years since our last adjustment on this?
2011.
So, it's been a while. We're just trying to get up to speed with our neighbors.
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Ordinance number 19-0-088 has passed. Resolution 19-R-113.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to expend $1,000 as and for the city of Mentor's contribution to a multi-jurisdiction trail enhancement grant and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is really just a show of support on behalf of council to... The city has already committed itself to being a partner with the Lake County Health District and Sugar River Partnership to apply for grant funding to both initially for planning for a multi-jurisdictional bikeway trail connector.
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?